On what this spreadsheet is and what this other paper is. So this paper right here, you don't remember, if you don't remember seeing it, it is the capital sheet that was from the budget ordinance that was passed back in July. And so these are the items when we talk about the six point whatever million. Every item is accounted for. It's not just a bucket of money sitting over here free. There's items accounted for. Now, I can't, that doesn't mean it can't be amended, but it is accounted for. And so what I did in this capital spreadsheet is I went through, made some adjustments on some costs, like from one point four to one point six million for the new risers for the Civic Center. Check, check with all of our department heads to make sure that these costs were the same and or if they decreased or gone up. And Frank's on his way too, in case y'all are wondering. And some of them have, a couple of them have decreased. I've marked the increases. I think the big difference is we had the total of three point four million dollars and for the animal care, not the animal care, the homeless shelter. Animal Care Center was next down, there's some things to talk about. And so with our discussion with Tennessee Homeless Solutions and finding another location, it looks like that we can expend about six hundred thousand dollars for the location for the homeless shelter. Let me pass that down to Russ, please. And then, so we have that remaining leftover and that's on down at the bottom of the list that we can talk about. And I think really the only other material change was the seventy nine thousand dollars for the roof railing for the ned and then from two sixty to three ten for the tack truck for the street department. And Austin told me that was because they had one on the lot. They were trying to offload the inventory. That one got offloaded, so new inventory, so we had to order the truck and that's why that's gone up. And I think also at the last section, which is next to the last page and the last page, I took out everything in the column that was already accounted for in this, what you approved. And I moved it over to what I call the already funded column, which is the yellow column. And then so that last column is still what needs to be funded. And so if you go to the last page and then the STD, STBG, I can never say that.
STD.
Yeah. Is already funded as well. And so I moved that over into, that's another bucket of money. And so you get down to total amounts, twenty five million, seven oh four, nine, five, three. The only major item that was taken out was the road for Great Wolf Lodge. I did talk with Great Wolf Lodge because there was a headline that was concerning for them and told them that we were still committed, that our council's still committed. It was just not in this bond package that we were going to look at ways to fund it closer to their construction time. So I would recommend that we would look at a capital outlay note late fall, late summer, early fall for that construction. And then so get down to there, we still have two point eight million that we haven't accounted for that was in this sheet here. And so we did have additional requests as well from traffic signalization. So right now, some of our intersections are on loops. This will put all of our intersections on cameras. And so you won't have to worry about bad weather messing them up, resurfacing messing them up. These cameras last fifteen years or so. As opposed to a loop that lasts four, three. So that will replace all those. And then the two Congress Park items are for state games, which would be ADA accessibility for the pickleball court area and then lights the pickleball courts. And then to fill in the remainder of the funds available, I would ask and recommend that we put two point three nine two million on top of the seven million for road resurfacing.
Say that last thing, put two point three on top of what?
Three on top of the seven million.
Yeah.
For road resurfacing.
Yes, man, yeah.
And so that's the itemized list. I know that some of you also, you should have popped it into the microphone.
I was going to, but.
Some of you all worked on some other items and talked about some other items. This is just all I kind of want to lay out and then let you all go through it. Oh, Animal Care Center, I think, at the bottom. So we initially had six eighty nine, one forty in the initial capital budget. And so I put that in the already funded piece and then put three hundred thousand in the needs to be funded side. And so that, so it's not the nine eighty nine that needs to be funded, it's just three hundred thousand. I'll answer any questions.
I'm sure I went through here too fast. Where are the risers?
The risers are on page one, right underneath Civic Center. And so that's one point six million dollars.
Okay, now, we're not going to wait for the bond issue to pass before we start ordering the risers, are we?
Now, we started that. Well, we also have a bid out for the temporary risers. Even if we order them now, we still have to get temporary ones out. So the bid's already out for temporary risers for Miss America and Miss Tennessee and at one other event, I think during the summer, I think there's one more.
Let me ask a question about the riders. Now, I don't want to derail what we're doing here. But the riders are very important, as we know. But I don't remember ever seeing anything about riders, needing riders or anything.
Yeah, Roz, they were in our five year capital plan. We had them in this for this year, five year capital. We just had it funded and that was going to be part of the bond issue. And then after Miss Tennessee Volunteer, which was in June, and they got inspected after the budget was passed, we were red tagged after that. And so that moved that up. So we weren't red tagged prior to the budget being passed. That's why they weren't put in there to be pulled from fund balances.
No urgency or anything.
At that time, there wasn't. We didn't think there was.
That's what it is, Nick. I didn't know about the urgent nature of it until Mr. Black, I wrote him an email.
Yeah, it was after the budget was passed and we found out they were red tagged.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna start with something I don't normally say. I'm, I'm really excited. I mean, I'm thrilled and I think you put a lot of work into it. And I think it shows we can all work together and come together and I, I'm really excited. It's going for your vision, but also showing the public that we want to do business on the road. So I'm, I'm thrilled.
What is the green tag?
Oh, the green tag, that was for me, that's for my, for my brain. And so that was, we have, I was reminding myself that we had the one point six eight four eight two two homeless shelter. And then also I used the same color for another increase in price. And just as I move stuff, I color coded it so I can remember that I moved stuff. The blue is a new item in there that we know we need from, from TOSHA.
What are the number of cars in here for the police department?
Uh, it's going to be for patrol, it'll be eighteen.
Are those updated numbers?
Yeah, so, well, it says thirty on there, I think. I meant to go back and change that to eighteen.
It's incorrect.
Okay.
I just didn't, because I'd heard from JPD that there's going to be a slight increase in the state contract.
Yeah, we ran the numbers on what the increase would be and divided that out and it was right, it was eighteen cars they could get with that.
Okay, good, yeah, I was just checking there, great. So, yeah, and with the homeless shelter, I mean, obviously with the proposed change of venue that we're looking at, do we anticipate this being a hundred percent funding or?
I think, yeah, the six hundred would be a hundred percent funding. That's all we need to contribute for that. And so that will be for purchasing then to do some, do some remodeling, see for remodeling. But other than that, that'll be all that we'll need to, need to put in.
He said seed money and the building.
Yeah.
It's Hollywood, oldies but goodies building.
She mentioned it.
Yeah.
Now, does the ten million for the roads, does that include the, the two point five for airways?
No, sir.
It does not?
No, sir.
Okay.
That's on a separate line item, yeah.
Well, I have three streets that really need, need being paved. Let me put that on the record now. Lincoln, Lincoln and Lincoln Circle, Lexington and Hayes Avenue. There, there are tiered roads in my district and they really do need paving. So I'd like to put that out there in the record right now. Thank you.
Russ, you're getting behind, man.
I told you, I'm patient when it comes to this. They're, they're easy on me.
Well, let's.
I make my, I make my request behind the scenes.
I told him I didn't know where you were, JP. I said, no clue.
Well, I see we got a new mayor and it does a new JP Snowball, all right. Well, excuse my tardiness.
Richard, stand.
Who?
Stand.
We've got Lexington from South Royal Wood at Quay Hall that they got resurfacing. Got North Hayes from Maine Delane, so we got that one. And also have Lincoln Circle from Speedway, no, from the, from the Bell to Lincoln.
That, that's in the first, that's in the first contract. That's the three point six five million dollars. So that's in the first three point six five million dollars. And we're going to, you know, the proposal here is, was it nine point three two million, I think? Was that it? Yeah, nine point three nine two million total. So that's in the first three point six five. So that'll be taken care of in the first round.
Mayor, back to the homeless shelter. So with, with the proposed, with a third potential site now, it's obviously taking it, taking the, the clients further away from the downtown resources. I don't see anything about transportation in there. I know we had talked about having some type of.
Yeah, I think there's other, there's other, they have a van and then there's some more opportunities for them to, I call it lease, but kind of a write-off lease opportunity too for their transportation.
Okay, so, yeah, I didn't see that baked in. So we've got it covered otherwise. Okay.
Those cover sports flex, covers service merchandise, gets our roads. Everything, full package.
There's the fire department here. I want to ask you, in, in light of what's happening in California, are there any lessons learned that we might need to check on or anything here in Jackson because of what's happened out there?
Earthquake.
We got water.
We got earthquake coming.
But if I could, can I throw something up? I talked to the mayor about it, I think. One of the major issues that we discuss always is our infrastructure and our roads. And I've asked the mayor, I was going to talk to Mr. Clark about putting together some numbers to focus on all our streets that need to be repaired in the community. I don't know if we want to take a look at a bond later on so we can get that out the way. Because that's the number one issue that everybody in the community talk about, that we can look at bringing back something to look at and see can we find, look at, get that out the way as far as all our streets being repaired throughout our whole city. And I think we'll be out in front and we can start looking at other projects if we can look at getting that out the way, you know. Because I think everybody, he got streets, everybody got streets. So I thought about putting together separate, you know, some numbers to look at and see what it would take.
I think you could start with the, is it Pacer or always one of, the Pacer scale?
Yeah.
That he sent us.
And kind of put together something and can get, because I think that's the number one issue that everybody discussed.
Yeah, but we already have the Pacer scale, don't we?
Well, and it's because, didn't mean to cut you off, but kind of the plan that had been floated around was approximately twenty million to update one, twos and threes. So, I mean, this gives us, yeah, it gives us about half of it over the next two-ish years and buys us a little time to get creative on how we want to tax on the rest of it.
But I would like to get creative quickly because that's what I think we cut some of this money back and talked about things. But I think the number one issue's always been our roads and the potholes. So I think if we say we're going to listen to our community, I think we need to put that up front and see can we find the money to get that done, you know, to.
You do them like in a dollar amount and then come back and look at options for that dollar amount.
Yeah, totally, yeah, after this. Because I think, I mean, that's something everybody discusses and everybody always talking about. You know, everybody complaining on Facebook, everywhere else, potholes, potholes, I'm tired of our car this and roads, whatever. I think it would be something that we can show the people, you know, that we want to make sure our infrastructure is number one.
Well, it's also worth noting that, I mean, winter weather is the worst time for our streets. You know, you can't get a good patch on any of the potholes, just even buy you some time.
It just look good with the snow.
Well, I would just like for the mayor to kind of put a package together so we can take a look at it.
The Jackson Plaza, we approved a study in, I think, October to kind of go through and look at the viability of the building.
Yep.
And so where are we at with that? And then what this two million would be to demolish it, correct?
Yeah, so I was, I think we're about just a little bit over one million for asbestos mitigation and remediation. When T-Dak did a first phase environmentals on that, she came out and said, no, I'm not joking at all. Do not go in that up into the building without hazmat gear on. And so the building's not salvageable. It has to be torn down. We're about, what, four months away probably from a, from the, early summer from the economic feasibility study piece of it.
So if that's already the condition, I mean, a, a large part of it.
I mean, the entire building is.
Reason to even finish the study?
Yeah, so we need to know ways to be built on it afterward.
Yeah, this is the marketing, this isn't the feasibility piece. This is the marketing piece affirmative. The things that we're proposing makes sense.
That something can even done there.
And while we're on that, you were saying either one of you speak to the benefit of demolishing before you, you market the property versus trying to sell it or bring in a partner as is?
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, the demolition piece, no one's going to go spend a hundred, two million dollars, a hundred, two hundred million dollars, go, well, I gotta spend two million dollars here on this demolition if we have a, a site ready to build on as opposed to site have to go in. And it's time too to demolish it. And so we're, if we're presenting a package with a site that's ready to be built, then that's much more desirable for a developer and a builder than having to come on and demolish the site, then build on it.
Kind of like, kind of like a development, the developer comes in, clears the trees, the rocks and everything else and.
Kind of like they're doing over there at Great Wolf right now, clearing the land out before they build on it.
I mean, right now, you know what it looks like. It doesn't show well. I mean, if you were trying to market the site as it is, it just doesn't have any curb appeal that anybody could see.
And I mean, I think, I think even, sorry, I don't need interruption. I think even standing there now, as it is, the buildings around it. So there's, there's a, there's an approved design to tear down Popeyes and rebuild it, but why would you? Got this monstrosity sitting behind you.
Can you all also address, just so the public will know, once it's torn down, that we wouldn't have like soil erosion and how we would address that once it's torn down? So we'd be able to maintain.
Usually what they do is they gravel whatever.
Okay, correct.
Gravel and straw, I mean, like they did the, you know, these straws so they can grow.
The demolition cost is, is being in a condition.
Good. That was my stormwater thing.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
So the two that just came in, this list here coincides with this. This is the pre, this is the list that was approved when the budget was passed in July, right here, capital budget. This goes through, everything in the yellow column is what's already been committed to the capital budget. Everything in the column seven is what needs to be funded. And that brings us at twenty five, seven oh four. And that gives us a remaining fund opportunity of two point eight. And then you have the additional requests underneath there. So it gives remaining of two point three nine two that I recommended that we put into street resurfacing, which will put us at seven point three nine two for street resurfacing.
I was, yeah, I was, I was listening all the way in and that, no, no, I appreciate you doing that. And I know you'll probably have to say that maybe one more time, but that sounds really good. And we still, we have the one, the, the little over a million from the sale right of the.
Yeah, that's, yes, that's, yeah. Now, this is, that's in general fund, it's not in capital fund right now.
So we could, if we so chose to put that on roads or whatever, we, we could. But, no, that's really good.
Just, I didn't want to create another layer of confusion. Yeah, for the revenue piece, yeah, if you want to put it over there, yeah.
Well, one of the things that concerned me when, when we left the last time was the, the service merchandise. Because I really, I felt like it's worth more torn down and I really wanted to see it torn down. Because, you know, I, I think I said in the last agenda review, I mean, it's been an eyesore since I was in elementary school. So. Not to make you feel. Yeah.
Yeah, Russ and I used to get our Christmas gifts.
I mean, let's go get that conveyor belt down.
That's what I mean, just get it done in one place.
We were shopping at service merchandise when we were in middle school.
Elementarys, no. I'll be thirty eight this year.
All right, so this.
Well, you're no butcher.
Can you break down what the nine, one million nine hundred, how that, for the public safety complex? Is that for a study?
No, that's for the, that's for the complete design for it. So we have, we have renderings to turn over to the builder. And so Ron is working now and I meant to give that back to him yesterday. Remind me tomorrow, Ron, to do that. So we have the, we have the request from the federal government to help the build. So this will have documents ready just so we can hand over to builders and they build.
And we should, shouldn't we get like grant money from the federal government?
That's what we're doing now. That's the request for Mike and yes.
There's no such thing as a guarantee of getting money from the feds, but it helps our.
Let me put a button on this we just talked about a minute ago and I think it was Councilwoman Violet that brought it up. Why isn't it feasible to offer Jackson Plaza to a developer and say, this is it. We'll give you whatever costs, whatever your costs are to demolish it. We'll, we'll deduct that from the cost of what you're going to pay us for the land. What's, what's, what's wrong with that?
There's nothing wrong with it, but from a real estate standpoint, they're going to try to chew you down on the price on it. They're going to, they're going to want to chew it down.
Well, we know how to not chew down. You know, we got a master, a master negotiator in hand.
Yeah, I think it's going to look better.
If, if we're doing, I think, what we want to do and we're, we're going to do something that's, it's going to be transformational for the area, then I think we, we do what we need to do now while we're, while we're in the process of doing the study. And so if we just want to off, offload the property, then we can, we can try that route. But if we want to actually make a, a transformational development in this geographic center of our city, then I think while we're doing the study with JLL, having the property ready to be developed will be far more advantageous for us when we get to that point.
Yeah, I also think that it, when you, it shows the public, right? I mean, this, because it has been sitting there for some time, it shows the public that we're trying to move forward with progress. And I think being torn down looks, looks like we're, we're doing something.
And also save our, I'm going to let you, just save our police officer time, how to run people out of that building all the time, too.
I agree with Richard. Private industry can do things a lot cheaper than the government. So the tear down cost would probably be less for a contractor who's in private business. And, and, and the property, you know, it's going to be the same.
It's worth less.
What I think private industry does, especially the government, I've got that wild notion from somewhere.
Oh, I mean, can we, can we have to, we'd have to hire out the asbestos remediation because we don't have anybody certified to do that.
All right, just let me make it clear of what I'm saying. You probably already know what I'm saying. We found a developer that wants the property. And instead of us tearing it down and giving you this vacant land, we say to him, look, you tear it down. And whatever the cost were for you to tear it down, and we still want you to build this nice development and stuff, we'll deduct that from the purchase price. If it costs two million to tear it down, we were going to sell it to you for four million, you only got to pay us two million and you tear it down.
Because.
What's wrong with that?
Yeah, what I don't want to do is, is box this end to the point where our only leverage piece is to sell the property. Because it might be, the land might be part of an incentive package. If somebody's going to come in and build a two hundred and fifty million dollar facility, then the land might be part of the incentive package to give to them as opposed to trying to sell it to them. And so if we're doing that, then we're boxing ourselves in the corner of having a, a structure that has to be torn down and then we have no leverage of an incentive package for them.
Does that make sense?
The three hundred thousand for Jackson Animal Care Center, will that secure what's needed?
In addition to the six eighty nine, one forty.
Okay.
What, what did you say?
I was like, I wanted to make sure that the Jackson Animal Care Center, that the six eight nine plus the three hundred that we're putting in the bond is going to completely cover what's necessary for them.
They've got the architectural drawing.
The last page.
Oh, yeah, we just, we're working on construct, construction finish, yeah.
The construction.
Yeah, just finishing up, yeah, so the nine eight nine, one forty will complete everything.
We have the road plans and we also have the grading plans now. So that's to contract the road, get the road extended where the gristle are and also to get the grading done. Final grading.
Whitney's going to be ready. There she is.
Yes. Sports flex?
Well, I'm, I'm pleased with everything.
I am too.
All right, yeah.
I am too.
I am too. Sounds really good.
Hold on, hold for your hope, let me, let me ask that before I ask before you get your monkey wrench. Ben, I'm going to cut the mics off. Is this meeting, well, you're the closest one here to answering that question. Yes, sir. Will, will there have to be an official vote? Or can we, can this meeting as the determination or we have to go back and vote on the document?
You don't have to vote on the document. You, you have created, you, you've created a plan. You authorize the, the bond. At some point in the future, you're going to pass a budget amendment.
Have to amend the capital budget.
To allocate these dollars.
Yeah, okay.
And that will be the declaration of intention, if you want to think about it that way.
Okay.
What you're doing.
No, we can't amend the capital budget until we have the funds to amend the capital budget.
I wouldn't.
So I'm just saying, so we can't, yeah, well, I'm, I'm saying is I can, we can't go back and say, let's have a meeting, let's vote to amend this with this document when we haven't gotten to the bond procedure.
I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I was on the right time.
So I was going to ask for a special called meeting next week so we don't have to do that to move forward.
No, we're, we're done. So the, I mean, just to give you an update on that with bond counsel this morning. We are scrolling along slightly. I want to be careful what I say, Brad. We, we, we determined to wait until after you had this meeting before we, we have to do an initial, the initial publication, the notification for the process period. And we thought we'd wait till after you guys had this meeting before we did that, just in case something happened here that changed the, the outlook there. So we'll, we'll either publish tomorrow or, or Monday probably.
I apologize, Ben, like, what is the total capital, this will, total capital for FY twenty five?
Twenty something.
Twenty five, twenty four.
So that means the total cap would be right around thirty.
Okay, and around thirty million? And how much is the bond issue?
Twenty five, seven oh four, nine, five, three.
So we're going to take the seven thousand dollars out of the current budget for capital to make that twenty six up to thirty two.
Yeah, so, yeah, I went through this, I gave this to you also. So the, the money that was in there was already allocated for when the budget passed. And so this will be, that's what somebody re.
But, but those are the same budget items that are on this wish list.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I went through, sorry, I went through all that. So the yellow column, I moved over on the column that they're already funded from this sheet right here. So column seven is what needs to be funded. And then you have a delta remainder from the, the homeless shelter that we're going to add two point three nine two million on top of the seven million for road resurfacing. So it's nine point three nine two million for road resurfacing. Say that last part again.
We're going to, so the, on the last page, if you look at the additional requests that were made, the ADA request and then the loops for camera systems. And then you look at, so that remains from the money not taken from the homeless, homeless shelter. So we're just using the six hundred thousand for the homeless shelter. That's two point eight million that was remaining leftover. After those requests, there's two point three nine two left. And then, so my recommendation to council would be to add that two point three nine two onto this current seven million that's proposed to make it nine point three nine two, seven, three, four for road resurfacing.
So you're saying, other than what you just pointed out, there's nothing on the other capital budget when we passed out of those seven million dollars in funds? How much of that is going to go into that again?
No, so that's going to be, it's all in this yellow column that you're not even looking at, Larry.
I, I.
I looked at it like a bookmark.
Yeah.
I went through and checked them off, every one, and every one of them was double listed.
Yeah, so that, so what I did is instead of double listing them, I moved them over into the yellow column. And so the twenty five is what was not already listed in this piece right here. So it's, it's separated. So we're not doing that, it's not doing it twice.
So the twenty four carryover, is that money included in here?
The carryover, there's no carryovers already spoken for. Those are the items that were already committed to and those are items that were itemized down here.
They're on the same page, yes.
Yeah, they're, they're in column five now instead of column seven. And so we're accounting for them differently than we were initially.
So I told them capital then is thirty million dollars.
Yeah.
You want to take some of my money out now?
Well, if you look back at the history of how much this government has grown in the last two years, the last ten years, I think it was staggering. And that's why I think we look, or look really hard at every penny. There's no bad ideas here. It's just how much can the taxpayer pay?
What you want to cut out now?
I'm, I'm, I'm not suggesting anything right now. I'm just making a point that we're looking at thirty million dollars.
But the point also is that there, we have other things that are going to bring in revenue that we've cut out. When you take that source out, of course, it's passing down to the tax, to the taxpayer.
What is your request that we asked?
I'm, I'm just making a point that this government increased twenty something percent general fund last two years. If you look at a ten year history, it's, it's so much above inflation, it's unbelievable. And I just want to make sure we have thoroughly examined every project. Every project is a good project, it's just how much money do we have to pay for it?
I'll, I'll just say that the last two days, I've got to really thank Nathan, he has been more than gracious with me, he let me just come, I mean, really, it was, I don't want to say how many hours yesterday, but we went through line item, line item, line item, and I've got to say thank you to the mayor too, because he was calling Nathan and saying, look, I think we can adjust this. I have all the confidence that I can that this took a lot of work, and I do want to say it might have been messy and frustrating, but I think we've grown from it, and I just want to see us continue to move forward like this, I think this was good work, I really do, and I hope, I mean, I do.
I thought somebody was walking behind me, I looked back, really, nobody was walking.
I mean, I, I, I think it was messy and apologize for that, but sometimes you grow from that, and I, I, I feel good about it, and the five million is gonna come from what we talked about, like, fund balance. But we still have a really good fund balance, and I made Nathan really explain it, and he explained it in ways, um, that really made sense, and I appreciate that.
The capital fund balance, the capital outlay fund balance, what will it be projected to be after all these are done, it was projected right now, what, six hundred thousand dollars, what will it be?
Um, six hundred thousand.
Yeah, six hundred thousand, but it's gonna depend on, on how you decide to allocate that, depends on what you decide to draw from general fund to cover the fund balance deficit, so, I mean, you guys are gonna make a decision on that.
Right, but let me, yeah, this is a question, if it's six hundred and sixty million dollars, I mean, excuse me, six million, six hundred thousand dollars, and now I'm talking about capital layout, capital outlay fund balance, is it not pretty okay to bring that down to almost zero since it is a capital outlay account?
Yes, sir, it is, and we're gonna be down, I mean, we've looked at ranges, they're from anywhere from a hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred thousand, just depends on
So, so my question is, if we use that and bring that fund balance, capital outlay fund balance down to say sixty thousand, just to have a number, would that reduce the money we had to borrow?
No, sir, the, the, I mean, we're already, we're already essentially, it, it, and I use this phrase a couple of different times, it's all, money is fungible, water's like water, um, the, uh, we, you had that, the bingo card next time, Brandon, um, the, uh, I, uh, we, we want to keep, we want to keep a, a, a cushion fund balance in, in capital, because we don't know what the, some of these expenditures are actually, I mean, but, it's, it won't affect, it won't affect what you need to borrow in those, not, not worth, I mean, maybe seventy thousand here or there, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about it.
It looks like it's six hundred thousand.
I mean, that's what the, that's what you're looking at projected fund balance.
Right, six, six.
What I'm saying is that, I mean, it, it just depends on how much you want to transfer out of the general fund to leave the fund balance in capital, because there, there is use of fund balance in the original budget that you planned, uh, in, in July, and then this will obviously take some use of fund balance out of capital fund as well. How much you take will be something that you'll decide when we get ready to do those budget amendments.
Can we also make a statement that our next meeting, that either a resolution or just have it on our agenda, that we're committed to Great Wolf Lodge later in the year?
Sure, yeah, I talked with them, they, they, uh, are more at ease now since, uh, watching us, so, uh, they're, uh, they're okay. So the process, going through the process, there's no adjustments, amendments, no strike throughs, uh, then when we get to the point of amending the capital budget, this will be the, essentially the document will present, a little cleaned up on moving this, because the bottom line is kind of request of what you all thought, and so then we'll move that back into the document, and then clean it up, and then that'll be the, the amendment to the capital budget, right? Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, so you're gonna make, it's just a budget amendment, just like, just like anything else, we'll try to lay it out in a way that
Yeah.
I apologize again for being late, was there any discussion about thirty years versus fifteen years?
No, I think, we had, we, we were just discussing the items, we weren't discussing
When will that be addressed?
We will have, um, we will have discussions with rating agencies, that they will offer us different terms, it may be that we don't get thirty years, that may be, that option may not be on the table, but it may be the obvious option, uh, that's a discussion you guys will have.
Once we get the information on
Probably in a month, probably in a month, I would think.
And we voted on it before, so?
I mean, you, I mean, you have authorized a resolution.
Yeah, so technically you don't have to vote on it, but it'll be just like this, it'll be, we'll come back and we'll have a consensus on it.
Nathan assured me the past couple of days that they will work with him and look through every item and say, well, maybe this one truck you might want to kind of list it here, but he said that they will tell him what's the best year, how many years, what the rate will be, and really work with him how to maybe word this or line item it, that the city actually gets the very best deal possible.
And once we get that information, bring it back to you all as well.
What's the timeline on that, will be, will it be brought to us at the February meeting, or is that too soon?
No, it'll probably, it'll be probably the February work session, like going into the March meet, I mean, you have March, so the March work session, probably, I would guess.
I mean, we're looking at two months, at the, I mean, if we moved as fast as we could, as fast as likely, we're looking at two months from today.
Okay, but again, the risers are already ordered.
Yeah, we started the process on the risers now, and then we've got the bids out for the temporary risers, so we can get that, make sure that we have those events taken care of.
And for the Miss Tennessee and all those other pages, we'll use the rented risers for that, so we won't, we won't miss any of that income.
We won't miss any of that.
You're talking, the, the turf, is it in here? Where is it?
It's at the same spot, like, it's on page, the bottom of one, bottom of page four. Okay.
There's a monkey grant. We know where you had surgery, don't make it up.
It, it's not bad, but I know we're gonna do the fields out at the complex, but I want us to take a look at, uh, Charlene Mercer Park, Centennial Pass, uh
Yeah, so we're, and here's a new playground, fencing, ADA, and then what our ground keeping has been instructed on, because sportsplex play on so much, there's such a volume on there, uh, they're going through with, with RC leading them, they're going out and, and you, you should have noticed our fields like a whole, those, outside of sportsplex, are, it feels like a whole lot better than they did a year ago, and they're continuing that process of, I'm, I'm not even gonna tear the process down, I'm lying to you because I don't know, but whatever that process is, fertilizing and weakening and all that to make the grass better, make the fields better, they're doing that on the fields, and once you get that, then they'll work on the common area grass out there, so they're working on it.
Well, that's great, but if y'all would like to lay it on down a year, so turf that too. It's just two fields over there, I mean, I, I, I think in that area, yeah, but I mean, we could always add it in later on down, we start talking about other budgets, we can look at them, it's only two fields over there, I don't think it's
Yeah, we definitely
Yeah, I think we did take a look at that, I think would be nice for that area to bring that park area, but I think, you know, it's, get a lot of play on them fields over there, so I think we'd like to take a look at that also, if we could get a cost on it.
The thing I like about this, uh, sportsplex is that they make about two hundred thousand dollars a year, isn't that right, Jason, with new turf? Six hundred thousand a year, with everything included?
If all fields are turt, unless I guess that is gonna increase our contract celebration fee by about six hundred thousand a year, that doesn't count, so that's, that's a lot, so it'll be close to a million dollars.
And I can understand that they make the money out there, but this is a part of the community too that need to, yeah, need to be upgraded in that area too, because the kids over there don't get the opportunity to play on the fields out there, I mean, I think they could and should, but they don't have a travel league, and most of it's travel league out there. But we have a nice league out there that we can improve our league by doing some improvements over there at that park also, so I don't think turf field would hurt over there also, in that area over there.
While we're doing the popery, what, uh, happened, what, what's about the bathrooms at, at, uh, Charlene Mercer Park, what's the, what's the deal on that now?
That's in, that's in, right.
That's in the LPRF, right.
Okay, well, when, when's something gonna happen?
When we all get this passed.
That's, that's, and all this.
That's right here.
Yeah, every, everything's on hold.
That's in here.
Yeah.
So it's, um
The LPR, um, LPRF.
Christine wants to
So it's gonna be on the top of page three, is it, Charlene Mercer?
Look at Christie, Christie's wanting to take it.
We're putting out to be as by the end of this month, so hopefully we'll break around on all five of those projects by mid-March is what I, is what I'm shooting for.
Okay.
Stella Duncan is, when is
Same time.
The same time?
It's all the same LPRF projects.
All right, well, that's, that's good, I'll make a motion, we, we do it all right now.
Another bingo.
Uh-oh, bingo. Here we go.
Give me a second.
Are we supposed to get all of that expended by the end of this year, calendar year, so we can reapply for more funding, January, April?
All right, sounds good to me, thank you.
The Windy City Road? Yes. That, the park that, is that gonna be a park that's supposed to be out there? Yes, gonna be a park, gonna be a walk-in trail, pavilion, restroom, playground.
That was, uh
Lots of people have been asking about that.
It's the Ninja Warrior, like, yeah.
People want it, my people.
That was part of the agreement when the fire station was built out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's, that was an old promise.
Make you want to be a kid.
That's crazy, how long ago, what was that?
Two thousand and seven.
You can be a Ninja Warrior now, great.
We never told you to be a Ninja Warrior.
That's how long, that, that was supposed to be a part of it.
There was no timeline attached to it.
We weren't here, we weren't here then, we know nothing.
We're trying to make good on promises on that.
We know nothing.
No, we are, this right here.
So if there's nothing else, further discussion, then we'll move forward with that, and once we get the information for bonding rates and terms and all that above, then that'll come back to you all as well, and then we can move forward, and any time we got some of the things that are going out to bid to help expedite the processes when we, when we are there and ready.
Good work.
Well, I move, I move it, Jen.
I'm, I'm not done talking. Okay, now, now I'm done talking.
Well, Russ, I'm waiting, I want to hear.